All right, let's call.
Well, now it's not.
September twelve, two thousand twenty-three, Oregon City City Commission. Question two, order.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Adam Marl.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Present. All right, on the agenda tonight, we have various and sundry items. And let's take the first one, which is future agenda items.
Thank you very much. So provided for you what we anticipate coming forward, and this has actually changed since this was mailed out last last week. We have on October, October fourth is our regular city commission meeting. Right now, we're not anticipating an urban renewal commission meeting. So we may try to bring back just a reminder, a quick work session about the business license changes that we're making, that we were discussing around what originally started around farmers' market and kind of weekend events that kind of grew a little bit in some more holistic changes that were being made. So we wanted to just come back one more time before we brought back the ordinances and the fee changes, just as a reminder and just to make sure we all understood the scope and the financial impact associated with that decision. The October tenth was the commission requested training with our human resources attorney. And that's going to include both a public session and executive session associated with that. On the November seventh, after this was published, the mayor had a discussion with the mayor of West Lynn to identify, and they both identified that night as a potential joint work session with West Lynn. So that would then include the destination marketing organization discussion. And we do anticipate probably a pretty quick update on the Willamette path. We're going to try to keep bringing that back so the commission's aware of the progress we're making, but it'll kind of depend on how much progress we make between now and that November seventh date. So, sorry, a couple of changes since this went out last Thursday.
Thank you. So a couple of weeks ago, I had requested something on looking at the measure one oh nine, potential ordinances that we could send to the voters, and then also a discussion about Independence Day next year. And I just don't want either of those to fall by the wayside, as I do, and I do not see them on the list. And so I was wondering if there were any updates on the, on either of those.
Measure one oh nine will be on next Wednesday's commission meeting under general business for direction on what to do related to if the commission would like us to bring back an ordinance prohibiting either the, the service centers or the production facilities. And what that would do is if an ordinance is adopted that prohibits a service center and/or a manufacturing facility, that gets sent to Oregon Health Association and a prohibition on issuing any business licenses in the city of Oregon City would be in place until we did then have to put it on the November twenty-four ballot to let the citizens decide if they wanted to maintain that prohibition that was put in place by an ordinance. So that's on for next Wednesday.
So that's, you're talking about the Oregon Health Authority?
The Oregon Health Authority manages the licensing for, why am I drawing a blank on the name?
Suicide.
Suicide.
And she said the Oregon Health, something else, different. And I thought you meant, oh, the OHA.
OHA.
Yeah, okay. Just want to make sure that's the correct version.
And then, yeah, well, I, you know, I've had a couple of discussions about event planning, so we'll, we'll add this to the list and try and get that, that does have to happen sooner rather than later.
Okay. I appreciate it. And then I'm just throwing this out there for my colleagues, but this list has remained relatively unchanged since I got on. And I'm just wondering, based off, based off of the turnover that we've had on this commission, if it, if this commission is interested in looking over this list and actually determining if these are priorities we want to just keep seeing on the list every, every month, or things that we can let go of? Just throwing that out there because we've had significant turnover since I've been here, and I believe there may be different priorities.
Turn, we have a negative turnover. Okay, let's move on.
We should answer the question.
Well, there are things on here that we are, that we're, that we are working through and dealing with.
Well, I recognize.
Water quality. The metro food waste requirements is, is coming up for an annual review. We're dealing, we're going to be dealing with Maglofflin Promenade. We're going to be getting an update on the legacy project.
Refresh my memories, the disposition of the old Public Works, is that part of some master plan? Is that what I was told in the past?
Well, facilities, facilities master plan.
Facilities master plan, yeah. Is there a due date on the completion of the facilities master plan?
I think I'd put December.
December?
Yeah, but we're, we're actually reviewing, we're in the process of review, constantly reviewing that right now. They've made, so it's just a matter of trying to finish it and then fit it into the schedule.
Yeah, there was.
But yes, that was part of the facilities master plan.
The thing that we also haven't seen is the broadband study. And I think that's done.
Yes.
It's just one of the, I mean, we could look at it for information purposes or when it's appropriate first, because I know it keeps coming up. I keep seeing stuff on the federal level. It's like, what's going on with broadband?
I think we just ran into a little bit, you know, especially with anything related to engineering, between the engineering work that we have for capital, public projects, private projects, and addressing the ODOT two oh five project. I mean, it is really taking quite a bit of staff time that really has taken away, quite honestly, from broadband and some of the discussions that we have to have with Public Works and right away about what's really feasible for.
I believe, you know, we decided that we had to stay on top of the I two oh five stuff, which means other things are going to slip. If we let the I two oh five slip, we're, we're going to be up a creek. And I, I don't want to be going to ODOT with our hat in our hand. We're going to be proactive about that, so.
And I trust everybody saw Chavez de Rimer introduce, trying to introduce a bill to prevent tolling in Oregon.
Yeah, I think both Adam and I mentioned it at our last meeting, that that was coming.
But I do, in calling up Mr. Marl's favor, we do need to prioritize things. What's the most important? And let's do that and not, not be distracted by less demanding subjects.
Well, then stop adding.
A total review.
Stop adding stuff to the list, then.
I don't think I added.
No. You didn't. Okay. All right.
I agree that we do need to look at prioritizing some items on this list. Not tonight, but I think we also take a look at it. And I think there are some that we can either leave them on there or get rid of them because they're never going to get to the top.
Right, and that's, that's why I bring it up, is that a lot of these run here from different commissions. Not to say that they're not priorities anymore, but I think we ought to gauge whether that's a priority of this commission right now. And to the point of adding things to the agenda, I'm not here to just sit and approve things that the staff sends to me. I want to be a part of making this city better. And so if I, I have ideas for ways that I want to make this city better, then I have the right, if the majority of this commission approves, to suggest additional items, one of which includes the Youth Advisory Commission, which you are now becoming very involved with. And so I don't see a problem with that at all. It's a matter of prioritization, and I think that the, I think that this commission agrees.
Were you addressing that to me?
Yes.
Or in general?
Well, in general.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. We have discussion items. Item number one is the Cayuse Five Tribute Project Presentation.
Yep, thank you. Invite.
Mr. Pisadas and Mr. Conkle.
Yep, thank you. So this is really, we're hoping just a, a quick update as to the status of the Cayuse Five Tribute Project Presentation. As you're well aware, the city commission in two thousand twenty-one set a goal to recognize and honor the five Cayuse ancestors who were executed in Oregon City on June third, eighteen fifty, fulfilling historical promises made as far back as nineteen ninety-three to memorialize the loss of the five native prisoners. The project, in partnership with the Confederate tribes, the Yumatilla Reservation, is seeking to honor the five Cayuse men who were unjustly taken into custody, charged, and hanged in Oregon City. So I'm going to go ahead there and turn it over to Dante to just give a brief update on where we're at and where we think we're, where we're headed over the next couple of months here.
Thanks, Tony. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Dante Pisadas. I'm the Rightaway Construction Manager. I am the project manager for the Cayuse Five Project. Currently, where we're at is we have, we all know that we've agreed on a location with the Grand Ron and the Yumatilla tribes. And during that, there was a preliminary design that was taken in and agreed that the preliminary design was approved by the Grand Ron and the Yumatilla tribe. After that, the city got an arborist. The arborist report was conflicting on the issues that that design would cause to the existing trees on the promenade. Since then, the city staff has worked to minimize the footprint of the design, to minimize the potential impacts on the trees. We minimized the footprint to about, sorry, one second. Excuse me, guys, I'm sorry.
We have that up on the screen.
It was, so the original design was six hundred and sixty square feet, and the new design is four hundred and fifty square feet. It, the original design was covered about twenty-one percent of the critical zone as outlined by the arborist. The new design is a six percent footprint of that critical root zone. And the, the conclusion here is that the arborist, we worked with the arborist to find a tree protection plan that we, we could implement, and that has been implemented in the design that is, or that has been proposed in the new design that is in front of you today. The update for us as city staff is we believe that this design can be built, and we would like to move forward with historic review board meetings and PRACT meetings and finalizing bidding and going to construction. We envision those bidding to happen between December and January of this year and construction happening between February and May of two thousand twenty-four. You guys have any questions for me, or is there any concerns that?
So when do you go back to the HRB? Because I, I believe it was continued at your request, so.
Yeah, we are going back to HRB September twenty-sixth, and this design will be part of the package, and the arborist report will be part of the package. I was working with Christina today to finalize the staff report, and that should be published, I believe, next Tuesday or something like that.
This meeting with them, where did they raise any substantive issues that you haven't already dealt with?
The Yumatilla?
The Historic Review Board.
I, no. I mean, we've dealt with the arborist issue. We've dealt with ADA in the design. You can tell that the ADA is compliant. We are using materials in kind, and we are, for all purposes, the land use is a park, educational land use attraction that is very in kind with what is used or what is today present on the promenade.
Like, I'm assuming that the, the review is going to include the impact on the resource, which is the Maglofflin Promenade. And I think, as you stated, that it is the city's effort to do everything it can to minimize disruption, but use materials, as you stated, that are in kind. And, you know, we have got basalt, so, you know, we're using basalt. And I'm presuming that the, you know, the, the rock that the plaque is going to be on or that the poem is going to be a basalt piece, which, you know, we have lots of them.
Yeah, we, we have, we're trying to find a basalt rock that is already in the city, maybe in one of the other parks that we could maybe.
Or in the Upper Yard.
Yeah, the Upper Yard or Waterford Park.
We have a stash of them up there.
Yeah, there's, I've walked Waterford Park, and there is a lot of rocks of that dimension and possibly that angular.
I say, I don't think we have any, any problem finding any rocks in this, in this town.
I think Dante's done an amazing amount of work in then working with Christina, as well as representatives from the Yumatilla and the Grand Ron in, you know, meeting their needs, but then also making sure that the design that we come up with is compatible and complimentary to the Maglofflin Promenade itself in the terms of the use of material, the signage design, the signage lettering, the size of it. So I think that you'll find that this design is, is really complimentary to the, the promenade itself and the existing design of it.
Two of us went to meet with Dante and Finance Directors at the Yumatilla, so we've seen one version of this already, and they were, I mean, they were thrilled. So they were very happy.
Thank you. Just a quick question, and thank you, Dante, for the incredible amount of work you've put into this, especially with all the unforeseen obstacles. Just a quick question, the prayer on the plaque on the boulder, the last three lines, "So our families long to bring them home. Perhaps the land where they are buried will reveal itself. We continue to pray for these relations." Is that supposed to be revelations?
I think that's exactly what they read when we were at the site.
I, no, it is supposed to be relations. From my understanding, this, this wording, we've checked a bunch of times with the Yumatilla, and this is the exact wording that they would like on, on the, but I, I will bring that up if, I just, it's sensitive wording to them, and I, I want to make sure that their, or the Yumatilla's perspective is very considered and clear.
Yes, I was just wanting to make sure it wasn't a typo or something.
Yeah, no, I, I believe.
We can underline and ask them, but, yeah.
We also get the, the poet who wrote it was there with us, and he, he read this to us. Okay, anything else, gentlemen? Okay, thank you, Dante.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for the great work.
These are the signs of the tree protection.
Yes, yeah. They included that in their, in their submittal. All right, so the next item is dealing with Clackamette Park.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Pull that, pull that mic over Pete's leg.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Pete Walter, Planning Manager. And I'm going to give you a brief overview of the upcoming process for the rezoning. That is a condition of approval of the Clackamette Park Master Plan. The Clackamette Park Master Plan, planning files are listed here. This was approved conditionally on July thirteenth by the Planning Commission. And during the review process, it was discovered that two of the parcels where the relocated RV park are going to be situated, according to the conceptual master plan, are zoned mixed-use downtown, which does not permit RV overnight parking use. And so the condition of approval was added to the master plan to follow a rezoning process. And that will consist of three concurrent applications from the planning, from the Parks Department. And that includes amending the city's comprehensive plan map from mixed-use downtown to public quasi-public, amending the zoning map from mixed-use downtown to I institutional, and amending the zoning code for I, the I institutional zone, to allow a city-managed RV park as an accessory use to a permitted park use. So in the I institutional zone, parks are already a permitted use. The zoning code also contains a list of accessory uses for that. And we, the proposal is to amend the zoning code to add an additional accessory use for an RV park. And so accessory uses are permitted outright if they're accessory to and related to a primary institutional use, which in this case is Clackamette Park. The text of the condition of approval is in your packet, and it's fairly self-explanatory, and it explains in detail this amendment, and it would be specific to the two parcels that are involved. If we can see the next slide here, the main master plan overview is shown here, and you can see the upper center of the map shows the proposed location of the RV park. And if we could go to the next slide, one of these two.
Not working.
Thanks. There's only two, two, there you go. Thank you. This is a close-up, and this is a conceptual layout. It hasn't gone through any kind of detailed development review yet. But that parcel consists of two tax lots, which was the site of the old Oregon City sewer treatment plant, which was abandoned. And the Parks Department currently uses that area for overflow parking from the, from the park today. So in that sense, there's not a whole lot of use changing, but the RV park itself would, would go through a more detailed review at the time of it following the approval of the master plan.
O'Donnell's in relation to the right.
It's just to the right of that.
How close is it?
Right next to it.
Right on.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, right on the property line.
Yeah. So to the south as directionally, yeah. So the Parks Department has submitted this amendment to planning for review. We will forward the proposal to the Planning Commission at a public hearing on October the twenty-third, and the Planning Commission's recommendation would then be forwarded to the City Commission at a subsequent public hearing. And we have not provided public notice of the hearing yet, but we have provided notice to the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And in your packet, there are six exhibits which illustrate the area. There's some aerial photos that show the current situation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
I have a, go ahead.
There's no scale on that. How far is the new proposed motorized boat launch from the old launch?
Uh, that's a good question. Currently, the boat launch, I think I'd have to ask Kendall to come up and, yeah.
We have to go to.
Go to the.
Previous drawing.
Go to the previous slide.
You move those around, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no scale there either, but.
Fifteen verses, whatever, four or six?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How far downstream is that?
That's probably about a couple of hundred, three hundred feet.
Yeah, I don't know that we've gotten to the final design for the exact location. It was more of this discussion about how does this get rearranged, knowing the issues that we have with the existing location and the failures of, of that location. So this was more schematic in nature than, than final design of the exact placement. As far, Kendall, as far as I know, we don't have a final design on boat ramp locate, boat launch location at this point. Right.
Yeah, as I understand it, one of the reasons for having the master plan approved is so that the Parks Department. is so that the Parks Department can seek funding for subsequent implementation and construction down the road.
I guess I have a kind of cart before the horse question. So we are in the process of finishing up the Clackamette Park Master Plan, correct?
Um, well...
It's been done.
Yeah, that's been, the general development plan, which is the conceptual plan, has been approved by the Planning Commission and has, was not appealed. So this condition...
Okay, so what I'm asking is that has not come to us for final disposition?
Right, no, it's a type three.
Okay, so my question then is what plan are we amending? Because we can't really amend a plan that we haven't actually adopted yet. So I'm assuming we're working off the current master plan. So anyway, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, so this condition defers to an entirely separate process from the master plan. If this zoning amendment is not approved, then there'll need to be an alternative plan for the Parks Department. They'll need to either amend the approved master plan and come back to the Planning Commission to take these parcels out of it with an alternative, or, or find an, an alternative use that's permitted in the mixed-use downtown zone.
So I want to be clear, I'm not objecting to us making the change. I think it's smart for us to make the change now before we get to the final portion of the master plan. It makes sense. I just kind of wondered why we were going through this process when we only have a conceptual, we have a conceptual plan that was, you know, recommended for, excuse me, recommended for approval to the City Commission by the Planning Commission, but wondering why we didn't do the amendments first and then do the conceptual plan and then bring it to the City Commission. So that's, that's basically, that's all I'm asking is that...
The, the land use issues...
I thought the master plan is approved.
The conceptual plan has been approved by the Planning Commission, which is what I just asked, it's not been approved by us.
It doesn't need to be approved by the City Commission. The master plan was a land use process that was a type three review.
Right.
So... I'm sorry? No.
We've adopted conceptual plans for South End, we've trimmed a creek, et cetera, et cetera.
I remember we did vote on, on this during the period when there were only three of us.
And I was not among you.
Yeah.
And I will not be, if that means anything, I'm not supportive of this as drawn.
Okay, so I'm just trying to make sure that I understand the steps that we've taken. I'm not making objections, I just want to be clear about what's coming first, what came second, so that I have it straight, because that's what I wrote on the part and I thought, okay, did we, did we look at this? Did we vote on this?
Yeah, so when, when we're talking about a master plan here, we're talking about a plan that's approved according to Chapter 1765 of the City Code, which is a PUD-type process, negotiated zoning, if you will, or anyway, it's, process is more discretionary, that the Planning Commission can approve for up to 20 years. And the concept plans that we're talking about, that like Park Place Concept Plan, those, those are adopted through a legislative process, which is a type four review. So this is a type, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, or legislative process.
I just wanted to get the clear thing, because...
Sure, no, great question, thank you, it's important.
...involving the conceptual plan is that we had talked about speaking with Water and Environmental Services, which I did, but I have not followed up, to see whether we could accommodate the RV sanitation station on a portion of their property and eliminate that crazy staging and, you know, all of that that we're having problems with now. So I don't know where that is as part of this process, because my feeling is that we need to keep it. Where this is now is not the best place, but I think we also, and I'm going to say this, we need to charge a market rate for that service. Doing it on the honor system, to me, it's, we're providing a service. If you're paying for getting the space there, then you need to pay for the dumping your waste. I think we need to, we need to make sure we have some cost recovery on that. I know we had to do some repairs, it was shut down, you know, it should be paying for itself, so...
I agree with that. I disagree with this plan, I'm just saying it probably has no meaning at this time, but I think moving that boat ramp down, that small amount, is waiting for the same thing to happen that's already happened before. I think your current flow rates will not be appreciably different, especially if it's perpendicular to the flow of the river, which we've had that discussion. And I know Mr. Congal said this is just a concept, but this is as drawn and it very well could be as built. And the other thing I'll say, having camped around the United States is a very different experience to camp on a body of water, a river, than it is to camp next to a McDonald's. So it probably has no meaning at this time. I wasn't here when this was, whatever it was, approved, voted, reviewed. I'm not in favor of the plan.
That, that ship is slightly sailed, but I appreciate your comments. I understand, I understand that, I get it. Again, it's conceptual, there'll be another bite at the apple once it goes through, what's the term that we, that we use?
Detailed development.
Development plan, yes, thank you, detailed development plan. Mr. Mitchell?
I just want to make sure everybody understands. What's shown here is an approved master plan. And it does not come to the City Commission unless we pull it up or unless it's appealed to us, which it wasn't.
Right, no, I, I understood that.
So the parts, okay, so the pieces are going to be according to this plan, which means the RV park is going to be over on that.
I know, I know what it means, I just don't like it.
Okay.
And whether I can do anything about it depends on what the future holds, doesn't it?
We had a lot of discussion about the floodplain issues and...
Yeah, we have an RV park that actually is a positive revenue generator with a quality experience. And now we're going to say, well, I'm going to go camp next to McDonald's. I realize you can walk across the street and get to this park. That's just my personal thoughts, that's where I'll be when the time comes.
Appreciate it. Mr. Smith?
Let me throw a bigger wrench in here.
So we're talking about the plan amendment and zone change, yeah.
You can try to stop me from talking, but it ain't gonna happen.
No, I'm just saying, that's what, that's what Pete's here, he's not here to talk about any of the stuff. But we'll do our best, they'll do their best.
We're here to talk about whatever we want.
Go ahead.
You can try to cut me off.
Stop, just go ahead.
My point is this, it is a master plan. It was approved by two people, as far as I remember. Now, I don't remember exact if I'm exactly right, but, so that's a big question mark. This was brought to the Commission when there was three of us. I honestly can't remember if I voted to approve it, I don't think I did. I probably voted no, or I probably voted to abstain. But even if I voted yes, it didn't matter, it was going to go through by two Commissioners. I think, I, you know, I, this plan came through a lot of consensus and a lot of dialogue. I don't understate that. But for something so major, to have really two votes to, to, to really push it through bothers me. And it still bothers me, I have anxiety about looking at this, because as someone who's probably planned the most and the biggest events in that park, and for one that knows that this park is supposed to be the park that we want to see what, that we want this park to be a place that can host big events, this park can't. Because every bit of parking is gone by that RV park. I also think moving the RV park from the river is a huge mistake that actually will ultimately cause it to close anyway, because no one's going to go there. The conversation about the pump station, you know, the dump station was, you know, one that clearly we have to have it on this site, because remember they planned it right in the center of the RV park, which no one's going to park there if they have to dump their sewage right next to the campsite. There's so many issues with this, and I just saw some pluses about it, but every time I look at it, I think if this is the way this park looks 10 years from now, I think we really screwed up. Because we, the RV parks, and we made other mistakes in the past. For instance, the overflow parking for any giant event at this park would have been under the overpass on the area between the overpass and the cove. And when the cove built, when we built the sidewalk to the cove, instead of doing what any rational person would do and build the sidewalk against the street, we built it right through the property that we had, which was the only place to possibly park our cars for an event at Clackamette Park. So we now have no parking, because you have that, that RV park there. And what do you, how do you have a big event? How do you have any event? I, I don't know. And other things that I don't know why never came up with the RV park and the completion of that dump station, which is kind of hanging out there. It's not referenced in any of these plans anymore because it didn't work. When we did the, when we did the entryways to Dunes Drive, and that was two separate money projects that this city spent a lot of money on, there was never any consideration of signage for Clackamette Park, so that if you ever had a big event, that anyone would know what was going on. Because when you turn into Dunes Drive, we redeveloped that whole area as kind of a little area entryway, and on the other side by Dunes, uh, the Riverside Hotel, we redid that. That should have been considered an entryway to Clackamette Park, which I think we all acknowledge it was. But yet, there's no ability to account for unillegal signage on that corner that lets you know that there's an event going on at Clackamette. One of the reasons that most of the events failed at Clackamette Park, was we could have put temporary signs on 99E or on any of the streets leading into the park, so no one knew there was an event going on. To have a master plan that doesn't address all these things and essentially, you know, proved by a commission that was, you know, minimal, I'm going to vote no on anything of this too.
Oh, I think if you...
I think we need to revisit it.
I think the question that you're asking is that the entryways that were redone as part of the McLaughlin Boulevard project were under the purview of, of Oregon Department of Transportation. That's part of their prop, part of their rights.
It's one argument that I said that makes this park regrettable.
So I don't know what influence we would have had to get them to allow us to...
We had influence on all the design of that.
Well, it doesn't mean we...
There's only one example, I can go on 10 more examples where I hate this design.
We, we can go back and ask for allowance for a sign there, so... I don't see that that's, that's a deal breaker.
Well, it's a deal breaker.
For signage, I'm just talking about the signage. Mr. Murrow?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm looking for some clarification here, because I also recall having something at the Commission when there were only three of us, and we voted to approve something. And I'm just wondering what that is.
Yeah, we're trying to...
It was this, it was this design.
Right, but it was, but we've also told them...
Trying to find the staff report associated with it.
Okay, I'm curious, because it was also said that we didn't approve anything related to this, so... Which is contrary to my...
No, my question was, did we? And I thought we did. And Mike clarified it for me.
You did.
Yes.
The concept, but then we submitted a master plan that was approved through the development review process. Right, so, sorry, we're trying to locate when that happened and what exactly we brought you at that time.
We'll clarify it, because it's a conceptual plan.
Just clarify this procedural question. At this point in time, if any of those who voted in the affirmative wanted to reconsider, could the issue be reconsidered? At this point, it's a procedural issue. At this point in time, if any of those who voted in the affirmative to approve this, could, could they move for a reconsideration?
I would, I would think so, yeah. I mean, it's been more than one meeting. Yeah, I, I would think that the Commission could ask to review this master plan again.
And I believe it has to be one of those who voted in the affirmative. I, I think that's meeting rules of order, I think. But I don't know for sure, that's why I'm posing the question.
Clackamette Park as is, without the RV park property, is now Charter Park, correct?
I'm sorry?
Charter Park?
Clackamette Park is a Charter Park.
Correct.
In its entirety, except for the two parcels that we're talking about.
Correct, because we...
So if there's a zoning change, I'm assuming, and if there's a zoning change and that becomes eventually the RV park, the next step would be, that would be having, we'd have a conversation about whether that becomes part of the Charter Park.
I would assume that'd be a conversation, yes.
But that would come after all of that?
Yes, yeah. Because what we ran into was, you know, another, you know, we still got to deal with the zoning of that, of the two pieces that are adjacent to 99. Previous Commissions, you know, wanted that for retail or development, so it was zoned mixed-use downtown. I, I'd have to go back to see what it was zoned prior to mixed-use downtown. I don't remember what the zoning was, might have been commercial.
It was to accommodate the, accommodate the sewer treatment plant.
And that's going way back, yeah. But, you know, we, what we, what we found is, you know, as we've gone through and updated our code, we've never really touched, like, parks, we've just always said parks, right? And so one interpretation could be that an RV park is part of a park. But we just felt like we needed, since we're doing this process, that we would clarify where this RV park is and why it's associated with a park in this location, just for more for clarity moving down the road. Because we were really struggling, you know, I don't exactly know how this got built here other than it's there, where it currently is, right? From a zoning standpoint, so this was really just trying to clean it up, because we knew we had to do this zone change. We've traditionally tried to get public properties owned by the city into institutional, publicly owned, and then into, you know, whatever is the appropriate zoning associated with that. In this case, it'd be a parks versus an institutional zoning. It wasn't, because historically, previous Commissions wanted to see this sold and redeveloped. And so that's why it was held in that mixed-use downtown. And we were kind of having this discussion about the two houses that the Urban Renewal Agency owns that were, now we're trying to get them back out of public and institutional so that they can be sold.
But I would say in all those conversations about redevelopment, one of the specific things that we had always said was, if a development proposal comes in, it immediately comes to us for a discussion about shared parking, and that that would stay parking underneath whatever building was built there. So it was always, even selling the lot or redeveloping it, was always still worried about that question of parking.
Of how the overflow would work, yeah.
To revisit the question I posed, do I need a consensus of support from this Commission to have Mr. Kabizman answer if the question can be revisited? If anyone who voted affirmative would move for reconsideration? Do we need to seek an answer from Kabizman?
Yeah, because I think, I think we need to go back. Can I, I don't remember when we did this. We're trying to go back and see what we brought you to approve, so that would probably... But I do, I do recall, I just can't remember if it's the same, if it was the same meeting or if moving forward, it had to be someone who voted yes who asked to bring it back. August of '22?
Yes.
Um, so, yeah, I guess it's up to the Commission if that's something you'd like us to spend time on? August what, 7?
Are you looking at who voted what, windows and three members?
Yeah, we're trying to find, get back to the Commission meeting.
Let's set that aside for just a minute while they look for it, and then we can continue with any other questions with regard to the plan amendment and zone change that needs to move forward.
Well, I don't want to lose sight of a reconsideration if it's possible. I don't want to talk over and just have it disappear.
We're talking about the two lots, not the conceptual plan. We're talking about the two lots that we're here for to talk about the plan amendment and zone change. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that particular proposal?
Well, I know we can't vote on it tonight, but, but the concern would be, if, if we do that, then it, it can't go back to some of the uses for mixed-use downtown. We, because we're, we're zoning it institutional without knowing for sure that we want it to be part of the park.
Well, let me maybe give you a little historical perspective, because I was working at the city when the Commission at the time, under the auspices of Mayor Alec, the proposal for the McDonald's came in. for the McDonald's came in. And the staff's recommendation was that they not put it where it is now. That's where McDonald's wanted it. And staff said, no, that splits the parcel in half and makes it undevelopable because we have the little remainder and then we have the other two pieces. We had recommended pushing McDonald's over to Dunes Drive-
Towards the hotel.
And that they not have that weird little driveway thing. And we went round and round and round and round about it and it was a split vote. And I think my opinion back then is the same opinion that I have now, is it makes those parcels not viable because we don't have a big enough piece. Nobody's going to buy the little piece with that ridiculous accessway on it. And, you know, it's just, it, you know, hindsight's always 20/20. But again, I know what our community development director recommended at the time. And so, you know, when I drive down there, you're talking about getting a little, it's like, why do we do that? So that's, that's kind of the history of those parcels. And, you know, the debate of whether we needed the McDonald's there or not is that wasn't the issue. It was trying to get them to allow us to have a parcel that was redevelopable as opposed to, you know, what we have now. Plus, we had the whole issue of the fact that it was a, it was the Tri-City Service District Plant. And then when the county turned it over to us, they basically said that we needed to be using it for park purposes. So it has flipped, you know, to, I don't know where the mixed use development zoning came because that wasn't what the conditions of the sale said, that they, whether they sold it to us or gave it to us, I don't quite remember now. But that was part of that, was it was supposed to be used for park purposes.
I guess, the point I was trying to make is I, we shouldn't be moving forward a zone change at all until we get an answer to the question of whether or not we're going to reopen the approval of the master plan.
Agreed.
Again, we can't make a decision here and-
I understand, but we don't need to spend staff time on it or anything else until we answer the bigger question.
Well, I guess if that's, that's the bigger question, I know that there is dissatisfaction with the location, but I, you know, we went, the community went through a process and the community had a lot of input on what this conceptual plan is and what is proposed to be. And I believe that there was a great deal of conversation about moving the RV park, whether we personally like it or not, off the river so that we could recapture some of the amenity that belongs to the river. Because, I mean, right now, personally, I don't really go down to the RV park because I feel it impinge, me personally, impinges upon my experience at the river. And why should the people in the RV park get all the benefit of that when they can kind of walk over? I mean, I'm only speaking for myself personally. Then we had, we talked, you know, with the community meetings, there was a lot of discussion about floodplains, there was commission, talk about restoration of the bank. There was a lot of discussion. I went to a lot of the community meetings that were involved in the process of the development of this plan. So it wasn't just one group of people, it was a whole bunch of people in this community. And I don't, I, you know, I want to respect their involvement and their input into that process. It doesn't mean I have to agree with everything 100%, but, you know, that's part of what we do when we have these projects like this where we open it up to our community and say, well, what do you want? You know, what do you think? And this was the best, best of all the possible options that came up from that gen, community-generated input. And it went, you know, went up and down. So, I mean, that's just kind of, you know, my synopsis of where we are with this thing.
So how many respondents were there that were involved in that input? Anybody recall?
Well-
You got your mic.
The public engagement, the public engagement process took over a year. We had multiple public engagement meetings. We did stakeholder interviews with community members, city commissioners. We did interviews. We did online surveys. So we had a great deal of people involved in the process and multiple users involved in the process to decide on these designs. The other thing that we did is we had joint sessions with the city commission, with Pratt to talk about the designs, to get input from both sides. And we even brought it back multiple times to the city commission to have conversations about this final design as well. And in regards to the RV park, one of the main things that has been a concern of ours and that we've been, been talking about is, is maintenance, closures. And the other aspect of the design is the community wanted more green space. So we were able to add more green space and we added additional parking as well because of the statement that Commissioner Smith made. This is one of two of our big sites for events, so we need to have more parking. In regards to the concerns about the boat ramp, we worked directly with ODFW. We worked with the Marine Board. We actually had them come to the meetings. We know there's going to need to be some additional work with hydrology studies and more research done, engagement with the boating community before we get to a final location and design for that boat ramp. But what this master plan will do is allow us to take this master plan and go out for funding, start having those conversations with the Marine Board to start that process of figuring out what the next steps need to be to make sure that we have the proper engagement and the proper resources to start looking at getting the, getting the plan designed.
I guess the only comments I would make would be a few. One is I'm always suspicious of public input because oftentimes it involves a very vocal minority that dictates the future of any project. Two is the boat ramp piece is, that's insanity to me. I mean, it's going to do the same thing we did before and expect a different outcome because it's 300 feet downstream. And I know that's not the final design according to Mr. Conkle, but I doubt if it'll change. Three is, when I've been to, the RV park in its current state, even with maintenance, has always been a positive cash generator. And I've got the numbers from back when Wyatt Parno was here. Four is, many of the people who use that RV park, believe it or not, are local residents who want to go down and sit on a river during the heat of summer sometime and just enjoy that. So again, I may not prevail in this, but I do want a decision on if we can revisit it, if any of those who voted in the affirmative would care to reconsider it. If not, then some decisions will just stand, but I won't be party to them.
Hang on, Mr. Marl was next in line, so-
Go ahead. Thank you. So just a few comments on the RV park. The reason I supported it being in the place where it is as presented was already stated, which is that I don't want us to be constantly fighting with Mother Nature every year, every other year, with it being in the floodplain. I think that, at least for me, the reason where, why I go camping on certain places isn't necessarily the exact location of the campsite, but the location of the amenities. And in this case, those amenities are still there. I would also note that with this public process that we went through, which was really robust, it reminds me of going through the general parks master plan. And I recall when it was presented to us, there was some surprise among commissioners that water sports and like boat launches weren't higher up on the priority list. And my response was that, let's remember, let's take a step back and remember how many of our residents own boats as opposed to how many of our residents just want to use parks. And in the same case, I would argue, let's take a little perspective at how many of our residents own RVs versus how many of our residents are just wanting to come here and access an open space, which happens to be in the floodplain. And when, as it currently stands, we're investing a lot of time. I don't, I do not discount the, the positive cash flow that it brings and the interest that it brings, especially because this is a regional park. But I also think that it's greatly diminished by the fact that we're investing so much maintenance because of the floodplain issues. And that's something that I do not want us to keep working on every single year and investing time in because we know it's just going to happen over and over again.
Remember this, the facility can be improved to offset that and minimize or do away with that maintenance due to high water. So in the current condition, yeah, you do. But even with that maintenance, it's been a positive cash generator. Again, it'll be what it's going to be. I just know where I stand on it.
Rocky?
And I agree with the, a lot of the dialogue that took place to get here, so I'm not discounting that. But I also will say with the arguments about why certain things are a certain way, one of the biggest things, even above some of the priorities that have been mentioned already, is this community march almost at the top, community events the last multiple years. This park cannot handle giant community events. Now, if you have a, and I would think that most people don't plan events, would look at this and say, okay, well, we've doubled the parking in the park. And that's great because there is a lot more parking there than there was. However, if you have a major event, none of that parking lot will be accessed by anyone coming. Because if you have a parade or you have a carnival, that's where it's going. So, and you're not going to let 50 people park inside of the park and the rest of the 300 cars park somewhere else, right? You're going to block off the park and, and now for smaller events, yeah, maybe that, you know, how many, I don't know how many parking spots are there. But for, for a large scale event, no one's parking within the boundaries of that park. So where do they park? And most people would do what the shopping center probably is not excited about is they park there and they block. Or, you know, we have areas past the cove, but we have areas past the cove that we've poorly designed that aren't effective to use for parking right now. If that conversation happens and we take a look at Main Street Extension before the cove and how that could be used as parking, you know, which I can't believe is not part of this, you know, thought process and it needs to be. That's, those are the concerns I'm bringing up with that. Because we never addressed that issue at all.
Well, I mean, I think your idea about overflow parking is valid, but I don't see why-
Well, not just overflow, period.
Well, why we couldn't make, why the event organizers couldn't make arrangements with the Oregon City Shopping Center.
Well, that's possible too.
The only time I've seen that thing full-
No, I get that.
Was when Coastal had the camel or whatever the heck it was over there. And every single spot was pretty much filled with a line, looked like a mile long, of kids waiting to pet a camel.
I guess I, as a city commissioner, wouldn't rely on asking a private property to help us meet the guidelines that the citizens of this town want us to meet our priorities.
Well, I'm not saying-
That we're going to rely on a shopping center to say, well, hey, we didn't plan for parking, so could we use yours?
Well, I'm just saying that it's the event organizer, if they need additional parking, it's not like it's not-
It's not about additional. There's no parking at all if you have a massive event. Where are you going to park anybody?
Well, I don't know what you mean by massive event. I guess we can't be all things to all people. The community decided that this is what they wanted and I think Commissioner Marl stated it very succinctly, is that there were some things that we were surprised that wasn't a high priority, but other things came up to the top. And that's what this tried to address. This was, this was a community-based plan and not everybody got everything they wanted. But it's, it's, it's a plan that was created by the community. And there were voices, there were loud voices. We had all these people coming in about this dock and this thing and that thing.
Well, the dock's still not-
I know. And that's, again, it's conceptual. I'm not looking at it, that's exactly where that's going to go. I mean, you know, when I did my vote, you know, I probably voted differently, you know, on a private level about the boat ramp. But, you know, I'm not going to say that because I don't want all the people who like boat ramps to come and say, how come you hate boat? I don't hate boat ramps. So again, we're looking at a community-based plan that was put forth by the community. And I'm feeling a little apprehensive about going back and saying, well, we don't really care what you people think. This is, this is kind of what, you know. So let's give the answer to your question, not, maybe not tonight. We'll get the answer to your question.
Appreciate that.
So, okay, so just, not that this matters at all. So it looks like we brought this back a couple times. On August 17th of 2022, we, there was approval of the Clackamas Park master plan. We do have the minutes here. It was voted two to one. Commissioners Marl and McGriff voted yay. Commissioner Smith voted nay. So, sure. So it was brought back a couple times to the commission, but it looks like final action was taken on August 17th of 2022, requesting approval of the Clackamas Park master plan. And this was more of approving the plan that was then submitted to go through the land use process. So this was more trying to get consensus from the commission and direction from the commission. Are we, are we starting, are we, are we making some changes or is this satisfactory to move forward to the next level of planning? And so that was approved on August 17th of 2022 by a two to one vote.
The two voted in the affirmative.
Two voted yes, one voted no.
He said-
Commissioner Marl and Commissioner McGriff voted yes and Commissioner, and Commissioner Smith voted no.
And to clarify, that's a commission that was only three people. So it wasn't like we were missing two. It's, it's two approved this whole process.
Well, he was on lead.
Yeah.
Well, I know, but-
He was still a commissioner.
It's still two, two votes among a five-vote commission.
We had four commissioners at the time.
And the reason I ask, and I, and I don't know what-
And you were on it-
I don't know what the timeframe is, but I do know then that in Robert's Rules of Order, the, anyone on the prevailing vote can ask for another vote. I don't know how long that-
Right. How long that lasts.
That's my question.
Right. And I don't know the answer to that either.
That is part of Robert's Rules of Order, it is.
Right.
So we have, we have, so I was just asking for that information.
Yeah, right.
That's all I ask.
Well, you just got the information.
No.
No, I did not.
No, we didn't. We had, and we don't know-
Not the information about the meeting, not about the legal-
So I guess, can I just ask, is there consensus from the commission to ask the attorney to clarify how this specific item can be brought back for reconsideration?
Yes.
I see.
We're not voting.
I know. I, I'm just asking.
It's a work session. I don't want to get in trouble.
I'm not voting, but-
We already went to, yeah, thanks commission about some-
Is that the direction of the discussion?
Well, the city manager is asking a broader question than what you asked. I support that.
I think I'm getting, I'm trying to get, it sounds like there is consensus to answer this question about how does Robert's Rules of Order work related to this approval?
I'm, I'm not making an opinion.
Okay. For my own education, I will find out. Thank you.
Sorry, Pete.
So right now-
No problem.
No, it is a problem.
So right now, we're holding this land use process. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming, Pete.
Thank you, Pete. Thank you, Aquila. Thank you for all your work today.
Which one?
Whichever. Sorry.
Yes, so let's take a, let's come back at 8:25. Item, let me get here, uh, item three, youth opioid prevention grant program. And this is, I think, just, you know, drumroll, this is Chief Davis's first presentation as chief.
As chief, yes.
I didn't say first presentation ever.
Right.
I said as, oh yeah, thank you, thank you for, that's our publicity. Make sure that gets in trail news, or, you know, on the social media.
He's probably got as many PowerPoints as Jim did in 10 years going right now.
How many PowerPoints did Jim have?
I'm joking, he had, he had at least two or three.
All right, take a break.
Thank you, uh, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, the city manager asked me to oversee this grant program, um, and we're grateful for the opportunity, uh, and think this will be very important for our community, uh, that can positively impact our youth, and hopefully prevent them from using or trying to use opioids, and most importantly, probably save their life. Um, so tonight, we're here to present just a draft grant, uh, that we came up with for the commission, to get any future direction. I just wanna give a brief history on the grant funds, you guys probably already know this, but during the May 18th, 2023 Budget Committee, there was $40,000 allocated, uh, each year, and, for the biennium, for a total of $80,000, uh, for the city commission to disperse in some sort of grant. Uh, some questions, looking back at the meeting, uh, that you guys had, was what opioid remediation activities would qualify under the opioid settlement agreements? What grant program, uh, would a grant program be an option to disseminate available funds? And that is yes. Uh, and what are the available funds? Uh, for this current biennium, though, the funds were allocated through ARPA funds. Uh, so to make this easy, um, we tried to model a pretty successful grant, I think, uh, the Metro Enhancement Grant. Uh, so we modeled a lot of this out of that. The goal of the grant is focused on youth opioid prevention. You'll see the first year of the grant is obviously compressed due to time schedule, uh, just because of when it got approved and for us to get this going. The goal is to have the grant open from October 1st, and then close at 5:00 PM on October 31st. Uh, give, that'll give staff time to review the applications for completeness, give time for the grant committee to review the applications, with an anticipation decision of the grant by the city commission, um, on November 15th. Um, if successful, uh, some stuff that we looked at, or I looked at, is where will future funding come from? Uh, that's highly likely, potentially, based upon the budget, but opioid remediation funds. So you'll see in these, the goals for this, they specifically come from approved sources from the opioid remediation list.
What you're talking about is the opioid settlement?
Yes.
That are coming, or have any of them actually come yet, or are they still coming?
Yes, we, we do have quite a bit.
We have some.
And we're using it for existing staff and training. I mean, this is-
That's part of it, yes.
You know, this would be a budgetary discussion in the next two-year biennial budget, uh, because we have allocated those funds. But when we were going through the budget process this time, there was some uncertainty as to how much would be coming in, what the frequency would be. Um, our next meeting, you're actually approve, you know, reviewing and potentially approving another settlement, so, you know, there was just some uncertainty when we were going through the existing budget processes, to what those funds would be, but then we also allocated for some existing services, uh, that we, that we'd identified. And, and so, you know, this will be, we're, we're setting this up so that if we decide to move forward, um, and use opiate money, because we either reallocate or find different funding for what the opiate money, settlement money is being used for now, we wouldn't have to go back and rewrite this grant process. That's correct.
Is there any way that we can swap out one year of the allocation with some opioid money as opposed to using the, um, American Rescue Plan Act funds?
It really doesn't matter at this point.
It doesn't matter?
No, it's general fund.
Well, that's what I, that's, that's my question. I, I would like to not see it come out of the general fund, I would like to see it come out of the settlement money. If there is some, if we could swap it out in year two.
I guess, I guess when I say it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter in this current budget, because the money's already budgeted, and the, the decision is gonna be in the next budget cycle, when the ARP, there is no more ARPA money.
So, you're saying, no, we can't-
So this 80,000 is gonna have to come from-
No, we can't swap it out, is what you're saying?
Uh, uh, we can, it wouldn't make a difference, though, it doesn't-
But then we'd have $40,000 of ARPA money that we could use for something else.
No, we wouldn't, because we would just swap it with the other 40,000. This isn't extra money, this is already budgeted funds. All the funds are budgeted, there is no new money. There's no, if I took 40,000 from-
Okay, well, I thought you said that the, that we hadn't received all the money, there was uncertainty, and so we budgeted in this category, because we didn't know what we had in the other category.
Mm-hmm.
So did I just not hear that right, or I, you know, could be it's late hour for me?
All the funds that we were aware of-
At the time.
Have been budgeted. There is no more new money. We have new settlement money that's going to come in at some point. So, Matt, you wanna jump in here?
Yeah, Matt's the project director. The one thing I think is, that is not, Tony's not necessarily bringing forward, was that remember we, we used the opioid money for the caseworker in this current budget, and that's the one thing that, um, that commits the known opioid money for a specific purpose, uh, which was the caseworker for the, so that's, that's why it's not really-
Okay, well, then I, I misheard then.
No.
Go ahead.
Um, I have to ask some cloth, there's some of the questions, because I'm confused a little bit too. Um, all right, so 80,000, the 80,000 dollars, um-
Give you another third slide.
There's 80,000 dollars for this grant.
Correct, over two years.
Um, and I remember the budget conversation, um, I guess my question is this, I think this is a very important project, um, I think that this is where this type of money should go to. What I'm questioning right now is that we're being asked right now to support a grant that deadline hasn't happened, that we're gonna ultimately decide on, that's open to all sorts of other groups. Um, and that brings us to the question we've had in the past, is if it's a, if it's an important city thing, it shouldn't be a grant. Um, and so these other organizations that have come to us multiple times for money, will probably be asking for money out of this fund as well.
Correct.
Not bad.
And how do, how are we unbiased in allocating that money, in, in the sense where we're now, we're pushing forward a, a grant for that same thing, before the deadlines even, it just seems weird.
I'm sorry, what did you-
I kinda wish that, so I, and I don't know if this was on, I don't know if this proposal was created, or we were aware of it before we-
So this, the deadlines are superficial deadlines that I just created, to get this grant up and running. So the money became available July 1st, right? We had to come up with a plan, a grant, we have to get approval to go forward with a grant. So these deadlines I created, because I wanna get this out as fast as we can, so the community can, or organizations can use this money.
Okay, so, okay, may, maybe now I missed complete, maybe I missed it, so what you were creating is the grant program?
Correct, that's what's in front of you, the draft grant.
I thought, I thought we were creating an opiate program with the police department and applying for this grant.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 this is a-
That's what I thought, okay.
So we were, we were getting requests, right? And, and it was like, how do we, how do we put money out?
who can apply, everything, so.
Okay, so it's open to any organizations that want to do a project, but the police department isn't doing their own project.
Correct, correct. We're not getting any of these funds.
Police department may, you know, connect with these organizations or work with them, depending on what their project is.
We may work with them, but we're not getting any of these funds.
I have no issue. I was thinking this was a grant request.
No.
Got it, no.
So these timelines are very tight, right? We are hoping that we can get this grant out to the public and with the final awardees nominated or approved at the November 15th city commission meeting.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we had talked about during the budget committee process is that some of us, maybe not all of us, felt a little uncomfortable about just handing money out willingly.
Absolutely.
And that we needed to have some accountability. And I think you were very eloquent in using that word, accountability, and I think that's, you know, because everybody comes and asks for money, but where's the accountability part? And that's the part that I, that you and I and others understand that we are handing out some money, we're giving some money, but there's accountability and so the public is assured that it's not just, you know, and maybe it'll be some of the usual suspects, but we've been, we've had usual suspects come in here that have fallen flat on their face and have not met guidelines or standards that we felt were important to the community. So everybody's going to get a shot at it.
Yep, absolutely.
So what do you need from us?
All right, continue on then so that we can go over this. So the goals came specifically from approved opioid remediation uses, specifically targeted for prevent misuse of opioids and prevent overdose deaths and harm reduction. So those are very specific things coming from. So you'll see in that draft and in the application, those are very specific for school-based programs focused for our youth for prevention.
I think that probably one of the things I would note that probably some of the community members might say that obviously this is not a one and done thing.
Correct, we're hoping.
So we've got it two years in a row.
So yeah, that's, that was what I was on diseligibility and that's why I wanted some guidance from the commission on. If you see this slide, two things that we don't want, you can't spend it for capital improvement. So we don't want this for capital improvement.
No driveways.
Yes. We also don't want to pay a subcontractor of an applicant, right? Because the more muddled down it gets, the more water down it gets, nothing's going to get down. We want very specific programs that are going to benefit our youth.
And direct benefit.
And then number seven, right, the Metro Enhancement Grant has a two-year cap. We just threw that in there. I don't know if that's something that the commission wants to do or if we change that after next year to see what kind of programs these have. So the good thing is that we can modify this grant next year. We're just on a time crunch this year to get this grant out there to the public. So that was some discussion and looking for direction from the commission on that. Just like the Metro Enhancement Grant, we have, sorry, I'm moving mine, but I'm not moving this. Just like the Metro Enhancement Grant, we think it's very important that there's some sort of demonstrated that they have in-kind donations or using some sort of required funding match so that we kept it the same, 10% and 20% depending on what the grant is. Next slide. Like I said, we have a compressed schedule this year, next year will be much better. But in our discussions, we decided to limit the funding to 20,000, that's up to, for discussion. But our hopes was, were to be able to disperse the funds more evenly, more than to give it more opportunity than one applicant. We're hoping for several applicants for this. We also limited 10% for personnel costs, right? Again, we want programs, we want maybe materials used, we don't want to just spend the money to pay for salaries for someone. And then the same type of thing for the Metro Grant, 50% upfront. If they need it to get this program going with the completion, they'll get 50% once they supply all the receipts and show and do an exit report of what they've accomplished. Next slide. This is where we are looking for more direction, specifically from the commission, the awards committee. We've kind of brainstormed a couple of different options here. One could be like a mixture of city staff and commission, just brainstorming. We could have maybe a police representative, finance, two members from the commission, youth advisory, someone from the youth advisory committee, I think would be good, and then maybe someone from the school district. Or we can do commission only, we could do some sort of hybrid. In the end, we could split it up where the mixture meets and then the city commission is presented with it and they make a final decision. We can ask the applicants to attend the November 15th meeting if the commission would like to have, answer any questions. We just didn't want to do this long drawn out process of all these presentations. We want them very specific in their application of how they're going to accomplish their goal, this goal that they choose or goals that they choose. And then that's presented, kind of more like a traditional grant than the Metro Enhancement Grant where they have the public presentations and that goes on for a couple hours, so.
Basically gave like a five-minute overview of, and then they answered questions. That was most of it, was answering questions. Commission, what do you feel about options for review and award?
So one of the things that, and I've had a lot of experience with a lot of clubs and lots of organizations and lots of programs within the school system. I, you know, actually was involved in teaching after-school programs. So one of the things that I guess I'm, I'm just, for this specific money and for exactly what you said, we want this money to go right to the core of the issue and that it's going towards, you know, pretty focused goals. I guess what I'm worried about is, is there enough in here beyond just, you know, this percentage used for personnel? And what I mean by that is, just having an after-school program does help kids, you know, learn the community and in general, keep them off the streets and out of, you know, you know, less accessible to these other kind of influences. But buying refreshments for a club is not what I want this money to go to. And, 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 you know, I've seen programs where, you know, and basically because I know there's resources for that in other places, right? So I, I think the type of things that I worry about is we get a proposal and it's like, okay, we're going to meet every day, we're going to, you know, this is our goals and we're asking for this budget money and it's going to cover pizza every week and it's going to cover this. That type of thing to me is not what this money should be for. So in order, they're going to, they're going to, you know, if they're doing refreshments that that's going to be hopefully part of their match. I just don't know how specific we want to get into.
I think it's very specific and if you go to like the actual program guidelines and, right, if you look at what the goals, these goals have to be evidence-based and evidence-informed programs, right? It can't just be someone, there has to be very specific ties to this and that this comes directly from the opioid settlement approving. So they have to do their homework and explain how this is evidence-based and how this is going to hopefully impact our youth from trying to use opioids and prevent them or reduce harms. You notice it's also, it could be opioid use disorder, but it also could be some other substance use disorder mixed with mental health conditions too. So, I mean, there's, I think they're very specific and I tried to make sure that it was very specific in the youth, like media campaigns, that was just said media campaigns, but I wanted it specific to prevent youth opioid use, right? Let's spell it out exactly.
And that's in the actual grant application.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
It spells out the eight kind of examples of trying to get to your point of how is this actually being implemented?
And then there's two other ones. So it's A and B or A or B, you can pick or choose, but both of them are evidence-based programs or evidence-informed programs. So it's not just someone, I want to have an after-school program. If that's the case, they have to describe in detail how that's going to affect our youth and through evidence, right? So I think it's very specific.
I didn't see that detail, thank you.
Well, if pizza is the way to get them into the door.
No, I get, I get that.
But they could also match in kind with that, right? Because that's one of their programs. But in their after-school program, they're teaching about harms of drugs, right? Then that could fall under it. But it's got to be, if you look at the application, we asked for, rather than the Metro Enhancement Grant, we asked them to be very specific on how they're going to accomplish this goal versus being a more broad brush-stroked view. And then last slide, it just, the grant contract, there will be a grant contract, quarterly check-ins with Ms. Kelly Dilbeck. And then because of the time limitations this year, we're recommending that if someone needs an extension, that we look at that, they apply for that. That could be the next time do we actually offer that? I don't, I don't know. It could be something that's ongoing, so maybe they do need an extension and then.
But if you just follow the guidelines that the Metro Enhancement has for an extension?
Yeah, and it's in there. I just, if the commission didn't want that, that's something. And then obviously a very detailed exit report before they close out their grant and get their final funding.
A couple of things. In terms of who the committee should be, I think it should be a mixed group, not just the commission. And I think your school resource officer would be.
Absolutely.
A good person to have on that. That'd be my suggestion.
From the police department?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
And I just want to be clear, when you say 10% for personnel, you're talking about 10% for program management?
So if they got $10,000 and they wanted it for a grant and whatever it is, they can only use $1,000 of that for personnel costs. $9,000 needs to go to that programming.
You're talking about management cost. What I'm thinking is, okay, part of it is bringing in an outside trainer.
Okay, yep.
That wouldn't be considered a personnel cost, would it?
That could be up for interpretation.
Well, that, that's what I'm trying to get clear on.
Personnel of the organization, right.
Right, if they're bringing in, yeah, I don't think that would qualify, but if they're, we don't want someone say, I'm in charge of this group and here's my salary now, right?
So it's 10%, like a, no more than that for management of the.
We can change that.
Admin cost.
Admin cost.
But if they brought in a trainer, that's part of a program.
Right.
That's not their.
Right, but it's a person, so I don't want that to get lumped into personnel.
Make the change there.
This is just a question, and I don't know that it would ever happen, but what would we do if, if there's $40,000 and we've said no more than 20,000 and we only get one qualified applicant or one applicant that we feel is worth funding, what would we do?
That's a good question. I originally left it open to 40,000 and after discussion with.
Carry it over?
I think, I think we would probably carry, well, we would carry it over.
Okay.
Or, right, we would open it back up, right? We could say, we could, or, or we would carry it over and come back and say, maybe we should change this tweak this little, based on what we've seen, right? We just, we're not exactly sure what to expect, right?
That's what I'm asking, that we were able to carry, we had some carryover and we were able to fund more projects because we had some carryovers.
And I think there's a lot more money whereas this is very finite.
I didn't have an answer, I just wanted to know what. The only other thing I'll say is I'm not in favor of number seven where it says no more than two years in a row.
Okay.
In the same way that I'm not in favor of that limitation on the Metro Enhancement Grants. If a program is working and it comes up for the third or fourth year and it's still the best thing going, I don't know why we wouldn't want to fund that, why we would take something not as, as effective just because it's been two years. And I have the same objection on the Metro Enhancement.
What about we say that we could make an exception to that by using our discretion? So that's what I was, my question about that two-year was, can a program that's trying to prevent this sort of thing be effective in a one to two-year period? And that's the question I don't know. So I would say that we could make an exception. I mean, there may be a program that's one and done, but we don't want to continue to fund it, so we don't have to. But if there ought to be an option in this particular program to allow us to extend it beyond a two-year program based on what you said, you know, is it working? Has it been effective?
I just don't understand why we would even have.
I would just, I would just take it out. I think it's easier to just take it out and let them apply and then the decision can be made rather than saying, we've got some exception that we may or may not have criteria for, I mean.
Again, the committee is going to be all the cheese.
It's a muddled message.
Well, I don't, I don't want organizations to, you know, they, organizations that solely rely on grant funding, it's tough, you know, because grants come and go. And we, I know an example, we already talked about, was there's, well, the federal program is going, ending, so you have to give us money. Well, no, we don't have to. We may want to, but.
So first, to one of the questions about the composition of this committee, I agree with Commissioner Mitchell. I think it should be various diverse stakeholders. But to the question of more than two years in a row, for me, that's not something that I think we need to worry about at this point because for me personally, my support for this program was contingent upon it being solely used from one-time opioid settlement agreement funds. That's the reason I opposed the case manager position in the budget, not because I didn't think it was a worthy position, but because we were funding it through one-time funds that were going to dry up and come the next budget, we would have to either cut a position to fill that or raise taxes. So when I supported this in the budget, it was for a limited time offering contingent upon the money that we have from these settlements. Mr. Conklin has already mentioned that there's the potential of getting more, which is great and in which case we would be able to operate it more. But what I don't want us to be doing is to be doing it right now when we have those opioid dollars, to be doing it from that and then once those dollars dry up, letting this become a part of our regular general fund. For me, this is a special occasion, this is a special offering from the city because of the special offering of dollars from that settlement. And great, if they continue to come in, that's great, but it cannot become, in my opinion, a part of our general fund because we're going to have some very tough conversations about how we're going to fund it. With the same concerns you said about, about nonprofits that are solely based on grants, this program has got to be solely based on opioid settlement one-time funds. It cannot come from our general budget.
Well, that's what I was asking about, could we swap out general fund money? But that's okay. Yeah, so I did, I did, I don't know if all of you heard, but there is a big settlement coming, has to do with Kroger, and they're going to be paying a whole bunch of money to settle some cases. So that's the money that's coming down the pike. They're, you know, they're still going, the Department of Justice is still going after other entities, so, but we don't have a guarantee.
Correct, we don't have a guarantee.
There may be more. I mean, I, I can't imagine everybody's getting off the hook, they're going to try to.
And each settlement's different of what we're getting.
When we, when we talk about the review process of kind of hearing, you know, kind of a mixed group, so when that group reviews and makes a decision, is that decision coming to the commission to approve or am I, you know, this is well within my signing authority? Am I just approving it based on the composition of that review group?
Kind of what we do with Metro Enhancement, once the committee makes the decision, then everybody's good to go. I was just trying to think of.
Well, the committee makes a decision, but then I think we bring that to the commission to approve.
Well, we're going to be part of the committee.
Well, we would, we would, I think what Chief Davis is proposing is less than a quorum of commissioners. Like two commissioner, one, one model would be two commissioners, an SRO, a finance person, and that becomes the review committee that reviews and approves, that then I sign the grant and we move on. Or they make a recommendation that comes to this commission as a whole.
I don't want to exclude any commissioner that has interest in this from being part of the review body. We don't exclude anybody from Metro Enhancement unless they ask to be excluded. So I, I would like everybody on this group that wants to be involved to be on it. I think everybody brings a different perspective and I think that perspective is warranted as a cross-section of this community. I like the idea of the school resource officer. I was trying to think of somebody that might be in the for-profit world that we could tag that has experience in this area, so there wouldn't be a conflict of somebody who's a nonprofit applying.
That's why I wanted to throw in the school, I likely could see the school applying for this too, right, to support some programs.
Well, the school resource officer, but what about?
I guess, I guess if there's consensus on that, I guess, this is $40,000.
I'd like to see maybe a physician, somebody in the medical field.
We're creating a lot of process for not a lot of money. If, if. If the consensus of the commission is that everybody, if the commission should approve it, maybe for the first year, we just have the commission review it and approve it. Like bringing in a bunch of folks to review.
Maybe three additional people to us.
It's just, it's just odd. Are they the approving body or are they making a recommendation to the commission of which there are five?
The Metro Enhancement Committee makes a recommendation and the commission speculates, approves it, right?
And it's, I understand, it's a hundred, you know, it's a much, much bigger pot of money with a partner.
I know, but I didn't ask you about the money. I said, isn't that what we do with Metro Enhancement? Yes, that's what we do, right?
Yes.
I don't see why that process won't work. I don't care if it's $40,000 or $400,000. So what do you guys think? Do you want to just have us review it or we'd like input from others and then we go, okay, we'll approve these recommendations or what? Mike, go down the line.
I, I don't want to have it be a majority, I don't want a majority of the commission, of the decision-making body, to be commissioners. Which means if you want to have all five commissioners, you're talking about 10 people.
I'm not saying a full number, I'm just saying-
What I'm, what I'm saying is I don't want this to be a majority of city commissioners making that body. I would much rather see one or two and a community-based body. My opinion. And I have to agree with Mr. Conkle, and we're not talking about a lot of money. If the commission wants to approve the recommendation, I'm fine with that. I just, I just don't want to create a 10 or 11-person body, and I don't want it to have it be a majority of the city commissioners, so it ends up being 10 or 11 if you want to try to include all commissioners. That was a really convoluted sentence, I'm sorry.
I already said I prefer the option where there are two commissioners so that there isn't a quorum and that it's made up of various stakeholders who are dealing with this on the ground better than this commission. I don't think we need to make this as complex as the Metro Enhancement Grant because it is not as complex as the Metro Enhancement Grant.
Rocky.
I think when money is given to a city government to allocate, then that's who allocates it. It's the city commission.
Right.
I thought the way the conversation was going was this select committee, which is small in number, would make a recommendation. That recommendation come before the city commission, city commission could either approve or deny. That would be the process I'd be comfortable with. They put it forth, we say, yeah, that looks good, or no, it doesn't.
Yeah, just put it on an agenda.
Yeah, and then, yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
And we could do that. We can, the committee can be the smaller and we could meet earlier in November.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
And then it'll be approved at the November 15th.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we would make up a smaller review committee of two city commissioners with a couple more community, or an SRO, maybe someone who deals with youth drug issue, you know, we would put together a couple other folks to be on that committee. They would then make recommendations that we would bring to the whole commission at a commission meeting to vote up or down on. Okay, that's great, thanks.
All right, let's move on.
That's all I got.
Okay, we're moving on.
Just so I can rehash, just so I make sure I understand.
So the number of, what are we doing with the two-year thing? Are we leaving the two-year or would you, so what we were going to do was, based on how this conversation went tonight, we were going to bring this back for commission approval on the next, the meeting next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow.
I think the consensus was to take it out.
Okay, the two-year.
Yeah.
And then change, change the personnel to like admin costs?
That's what I believe the Metro Enhancement Grant does, it's administrative cost.
Perfect. I think we got marching orders.
It costs something to manage a program.
Okay, yep, and we'll have that back to you next Wednesday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number four, update on city projects.
Have they changed appreciably since the last update?
Yeah, there's some additions. I thought so, I read it.
Oh, incremental changes on the Charter Parks for the McLaughlin, the McLaughlin Promenade. So we've, we've, what we've done is we've taken the previous survey that showed the building type of encroachments, and then we're creating a spreadsheet. And then we're also documenting with pictures the encroachments as we see them, both in structural encroachments and then other encroachments such as parking or, you know, drive aisles or landscaping. And so we're starting to filter those out and then document them so that we can kind of go through them, since each one of them is somewhat unique across the entirety of that, of the promenade there. So that's the progress there. Cayuse Five Memorial, you've kind of, you've heard that presentation tonight to where we're at and the progress we're making on that. No progress on the courthouse, there's no direction, we're not moving anything on the courthouse.
Stop, please. So I'd like to, I've been working to reengage the county on that particular issue, so I'm going to pursue that again.
Great.
Yes. I've mentioned it yesterday to Commissioner Smith, again.
And then for Tomata Village.
Yes, you're already there. If it was just up to you, it'd be done by now. Thank you. Sorry.
I am not on the county commission, it's somebody else.
As your disclaimer.
Yeah.
For Tomata Village, we just continue to meet as staff regularly with Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron staff, working through their engineering and land use. They also do keep us updated. Currently, they've completed most of the demolition that they're going to do on the site. They're in contract with two environmental firms who are going through and doing some more detailed DEQ testing for things such as underground storage tanks, any other contamination and cleanup plans associated with that. So they are continuing to work on kind of site prep, site understanding associated with that property and any future development action on that. And then the-
Wait, before you go on, sorry. So I would like to get an update on the proposed demolition schedule, and I would like to know, the reason why I'd like to know is because I want to make absolutely sure that they're not taking out any buildings that are part of the master plan that we said, we, you know, that, because the master plan is the document that's in place right now. They have not brought anything to us other than what you saw about what their future plans are. So I would like to know how they are abiding by that at this point in time. And I wrote a little note to myself, is, you know, how does it relate to the master plan and what was proposed? Because that's, that's the guiding document. And I'm not saying they're not following it, I just don't know because we have no, we don't know. I don't know, I keep, you know, as I've said to you many times, every time I talk to their chief of staff, well, we're going to be bringing that master plan, you know, that's been, they've been saying that to me for the last year and a half, and I'm, you know, I'm not holding my breath anymore on it because it's not coming. It's going to come one of these days, but I don't know when that is. So it would be really nice to know that information. I get a little nervous every time I go on the promenade and I look over there, and the next time I go, I'm going to make sure to take my master plan with me so that I can be looking at the same site, but not, I never think about it because it's always the last minute, oh, let's go on the promenade. So is that something that we can feasibly, reasonably ask them? I'm not saying they may, will comply, but I'd like to at least ask the question.
What, what would you, so you just want to know that they haven't removed any buildings that were identified in the master, so there were four buildings in the foundation?
I'd like to, I'd like to know what their proposed demolition plan is, other than, you know, what they've, obviously the building that was burnt, that, to me, that was-
A loss.
A loss, but it wasn't going to be salvaged. And the comments I've gotten, you know, off the record are, well, you know, these buildings are continuing to deteriorate, and what I saw in their plan was that they planned to scrape everything. But I'm, you know, again, that's not anything that I can take to the bank, that's just a comment.
I can give you where they're at right now, and I can ask them to provide what their future demolition plans are. I think discussions, and they're well aware that there were multiple buildings identified in the master plan, and when the master plan comes in, they're going to address those buildings.
But I don't want it to get down to we're doing demolition by neglect, which is what I'm, which I have a concern about. I mean, maybe they do need to go, but, you know, again, we had a robust process, we had lots of input, we have, that's the master plan that this city adopted.
Demolition by neglect is for buildings that have been designated.
I understand, but-
And none of those buildings have been designated historical.
That still gets into the 106 process in my mind, but maybe that's not, that's, I'm not saying that you have to think that way, I'm just saying that's what's in my mind. So again, I'm not accusing them of anything, but I appreciate the fact that they're continuing to meet with you and update you, it's just, we don't, no. So maybe nobody else has that concern, but that's one of my concerns.
I have a little bit of concern about it.
So trying to return with what I just described?
Yeah.
Okay. And then on Kanema Right Away issues, there's been no movement on that as we deal with the McLaughlin Promenade? That, those updates.
All right, let's see if we can run through the list quickly. Mr. O'Donnell.
Well, South Fork being the provider of water to this gray city, we're linked at the hip, so with ongoing discussions, of course, or developments like Thimble Creek, and quite honestly, like every other public works project, we have a chem building planned and facing these construction costs that have absolutely skyrocketed, knowing that we could choose to continue that pursuit of that building or we could continue treating as we presently do. And we're going to have that discussion in upcoming board meetings, and that's the most important things that are going on there.
You had a barbecue.
I didn't really see that as the most important, but okay.
No, I would agree. But it did happen.
It did happen.
There was a staff barbecue.
It was annual, but stopped for a while, so I think it's, I mean-
It was a nice event.
In the sense that it, the, you know, in the history of South Fork Water, that I was, that I've been on there, there was always kind of an annual get-together. That has stopped and it's kind of recoming back, and I think that is pretty important, not to say that it's not important in other things, but we as board members of South Fork rarely get an opportunity other than walking through the building and saying hi really quick to the staff to actually be able to have some time to get to know them and chat with them. So I'm just glad personally that that's kind of back on the radar to have us bring back as an annual thing, hopefully, to have that opportunity to get to know the staff that work for us.
It was good in the sense that it shows our appreciation for good work done and not to take for granted the fact that toilets flush and water flows.
Right.
Which is really easy to take for granted till it doesn't. So, yeah, I thought it was a good event.
Yeah, and I had to apologize in advance for not attending because-
I couldn't be there either, though.
I had to be at a meeting where the mayor's, where there was a quorum required, and our, my counterpart was not going to be there because he was part of that quorum, so that's where I had to be, and I let Mr. Parno know that in advance, so we had to get some things approved and completed that required a quorum, so I, sorry I had to miss it, but couldn't be helped. All right. Commissioner Smith?
No reports for Clackamas Heritage Partners or Tourism.
Are Clackamas Heritage Partners ever going to meet again?
It's a very good question. I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, all right. I think it's, yeah, it's been quite a while.
It has been a long time.
I would agree, yeah. I know they're still working on staffing up, so.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Merle.
So the first thing I want to cover is Youth Advisory Commission. We met this, this week. The students have been working on-
Yesterday, right?
Yes, yes.
It just seems like, it seems like there's a weird week in there somewhere.
So, yeah, we did meet yesterday, and I, big shout out to Jared Lyman, who has been picking up the slack, and as well as Shawna Kaufman, since Emma, our community engagement specialist, has left to move to Bend. I thank you to my colleagues for approving, making that position a full FTE. I think that's going to make a huge difference. But we did meet yesterday to discuss more about the developments regarding the mental health fair that they are planning, so just if you guys wanted to get this on your calendar, it is on Saturday, October 7th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Pioneer Center. I know Mayor McGriff has put in a lot of work into making this happen, and so thank you for your efforts as well. So that's what I have for Youth Advisory. Citizen Involvement Committee, we did not meet this month because of Labor Day, but the prior month, we did have a discussion regarding, discussions we have had as a city commission about instituting guidelines for postcard mailings. I think that as time goes on, it makes it more clear that this is something that we should be doing. They did talk about instituting among themselves a code of conduct, which I think would be great, but at a formal level, I think it's important for us to have some guidelines about how those postcards are to be formatted and sent out and just streamline it for future neighborhood association use. And I do believe that that will be coming to us in a future work session to discuss.
I actually have, as requested, two examples of what you had asked about, and Jared wanted these. So these are generally what some of the other neighborhoods send out. And I don't have my tape measure to tell you exactly what size they are, but it looks like it's, yeah, it's a quarter sheet, so it's like a quarter.
So, yes, we have that, and then I'm just going to group together both of the C4. So we did approve, this city commission approved putting our logo on that joint tolling values document, and then we had our C4 meeting the next day where I learned that there were about 10 other jurisdictions at that point in time who had also approved putting their logo on there, and I assume that that amount has increased since then, as I have been told. So that's good news. We did hear from Amelia Porterfield, who is the Director for Regional Solutions Program, which is inside the office of the governor. It's a community and economic development office, and I think that may be something we could look into with regards to the Cove or other projects, but they help get the right people in the right place, and in the past at least have been a good convener of those tough projects in the region. So we heard from her and had a little meet and greet, and then, of course, approved the Nexus Project List from all of the jurisdictions in Clackamas County. You'll recall, these are the projects that are not based on data at all whatsoever, but have been requested by ODOT to essentially let us tell them which areas we think are going to be negatively impacted by tolling that should be funded, even though there has been no funding source identified to fund these projects. To me, it's just a little exercise, but we did get that list approved. And one more thing, which is on a high note, is that there is a new website that has launched, rideclackamas.org. It was funded by a grant, and it's basically to help you plan a trip using the various transit authorities in Clackamas County. It will help you plan a trip across Clackamas County. You put in your location and your destination, and it will help you figure out that trip, so that's a very helpful tool.
Is there, can we, do we know whether Jared is aware that we want to put this on our, on our site, on our social media so people are aware of it?
I'm not sure.
Okay, well, we put that down because that's something that's beneficial.
What was the site again?
Rideclackamas.org.
Yeah, I got it down. Okay, cool. All right. Michael?
Nothing from C4 Metro. No report.
Yeah, I did hear through the grapevine that Happy Valley, even though Mayor Ellis was not supportive of the value statement, it passed 3 to 2, so he made me aware of that. I don't know who the other one was, but he was not happy with that. Clackamas Water Environmental Services, we have a meeting on the 14th. We're meeting at the Harmony Road Campus. I think that's the one that's behind the old Toys R Us. And we're going to be looking at the capital improvement plan. I'm reading it now, it's very dry. I know that Mr. Lewis has taken a look at it as well. Downtown Oregon City Association hired Juliana Allen as their new executive director. Downtown Oregon City Association hired Juliana Allen as their new executive director and she is at the office, actually, the office is open, which is nice. I know that the events that are coming up right now are the downtown trick-or-treating on the thirty-first and then the, sorry, the tree lighting, I just went right out of my head.
I think Harvest Festival too, I think they're gonna do.
I think there might, yeah, I think the Harvest Festival might be one, so, but yeah, they're...
That's on the twenty-first of October.
I think, yeah, I think it's twenty-first.
Yeah, so anyway, so that's that, so...
Are they recruiting for the other position?
They're recruiting for the admin position.
That marks the first?
No.
Oh.
That position has been morphed into something else.
Oh, okay.
They just hired a new assistant elevator manager and if you haven't been to the elevator lately, the new gates are in and Public Works did a bang-up job on that. Shout-out to Vance Walker on taking the lead on that. As you know, the Lou is under, you know, the Lou area is under construction, so we'll be looking forward to that and I, you know, I know that we were being facetious about it, but there was a, there was a request that came to me that because of comments that we made at a meeting, that we should definitely somehow put a tiny little plaque or something on there for Chief Ben. For Chief Ben. I said, okay, are we calling it the band, the band Lou? You know, anyway, so I think that we should be thinking about that.
He may be down there one night trying to pry that off.
Well, we'll put it, we'll put it where he...
After twenty years, I'm not sure that's what he wants.
Well, anyway, I just, I told the person I would bring it up, so I just, I brought it up.
And out of respect for Chief Ben, I'm willing to use my machining contacts to make a beautiful, full-size brass plaque.
We're not throwing that, not throwing you under that, so, yeah. Anyway, the Metropolitan Policy Advisory Committee, we did meet in, so what is this? This is September, so we did meet in August and we're still talking about the regional, not solutions plan, the regional...
Transportation.
Transportation and the updates and they're having all sorts of meetings that will be all day downtown and I said, no, I'm not going, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't do that. Don't have that kind of time. Next month, I'm not really sure what's on our agenda, but there was a suggestion by the leadership team that there would be less presentations by metro staff and more time for discussion by the group, because sometimes we've had, I know our last meeting, one of the presentations was a good forty-five minutes and it was a fairly comprehensive project. I mean, the presentations are lovely and they do great PowerPoints, but there's no time for us to discuss things and they go, well, what do you think? And then, oh, time to go and then we're done and so, so there's that. As stated, South Fork Water Board, we did get an update today about the chemical treatment plant for Mr. Pernod and our meeting is in two, is it two weeks? Yes. What's our date? It's the twenty, it's the twenty-eighth of?
That would be the twenty...
It's the twenty-fifth, yeah, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-seventh, I think.
Yeah, it's the last Wednesday. Obviously, Willamette Falls Landings and Heritage Area has been meeting regularly. The good news is, is that City Hall, the City Hall reconstruction is going to be moving forward. The city has approved the plan that the Heritage Area Coalition has put forth and hopefully they are in the final bid process and they will be moving forward with getting that building back in service, because right now it's sort of a dead zone at the end of the, at the end of the bridge and other than that gas station, which I don't know how that contributes, but anyway, so there's that. So, that's, that's a good thing. There's still ongoing discussions about how to involve the other tribes and I can tell you that it's, it's very fraught with disagreements, not bad disagreements where people are yelling at each other, but there's a difference of opinion and we're still trying to work through The other project that they worked on that's complete is that we hired an intern this summer and he's doing, he did a report and hopefully we can get the PowerPoint submitted to us for review on the influence of the Chinese along the, in the corridor, which is really interesting. Nobody's really uncovered that information before and I've seen a very preliminary of that. Legacy project, I have nothing to report on that other than I met with Andrew a couple of months ago and that's the last that I've heard. I did have a chance meeting with Robert Canyatta downtown, totally by accident, right in front of your shop. They were off meeting and he, Robert was there and he just said, yeah, we need to get together and I said, okay. Willamette Falls Locks Authority, we had a tour of the locks yesterday for the new board members. I am a new board member, but I'd already been to the locks like about a million times, so, but I went anyway. And basically what they are doing is transitioning from the Oregon Solutions Project staff to their own staff. They've hired Reed Wagner as the new staff person and we are working on procedures to be able to accept the money that is coming from the state of Oregon. The good news is that the corps has actually started work on the locks. It's minimal, but it's, we saw the work, that's one of the reasons why we went down there. So, they're reinforcing, so at the very head of the locks on this, on the south end, they are reinforcing the wall, some of it is stone and I didn't realize, but some of it is brick, so they are reinforcing that, which is good, so that was, that was very good news. And then Mr. Merrill already gave the report on the youth advisory and I just want to say that we're inviting not only the students, but we're asking those that are young enough or the parents to come, because obviously in order to help support students in their mental health, it would be nice if the families were involved and if any of you need mental health, health, or help, just come to the forum, it's not just for kids. So, if you can stop by, that would be great. We are working on a plan to have the students do most of the work during that time period. We have our, one of our MCs and the other MC will be Bailey Brown, who's our chair. Also, the good news is I've had two requests for people who want to join the group. We've lost one person because they're a senior and we're gonna lose another one because he's gonna be going to losing Clark, but he still wants to be involved to a certain point. So, that's all my reports and I want to thank staff, all of our staff for our participation in the five minutes of commemorating nine eleven yesterday on the bridge. It wasn't at one o'clock, so it was like one-ten, so they closed the bridge down and then Roy and I heaved a wreath off the bridge, which unfortunately did not land right side up, it landed right side down. You know, it was gravity, it was top-heavy, you know, the bottom was very light and when we tossed it, you know, it just kind of went, eh, and then flipped over, so it went down there. And then, then thank you for Commissioner Mitchell for also participating. So, I also went to the, I just, yesterday was just see Sean all day long, which was lovely. So, we both participated in the event at the Clackamas County Circle of Honor and I think Mr. Arnold, the commander, was a little disappointed because there was not the crowd there that he had anticipated, but there was a lovely ceremony and it was just nice, so that was the nine eleven commemoration. It was nice seeing flags out about all over town so that people were remembering. So, other than that, if we have no further business, I'd like to adjourn and thank you all for your participation, thank you for being here tonight, thank you to staff as always, and we will see you in, if not before, another few days, so thank you.